To the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the public are joining us here at the Great Hall, here at Town Hall, and may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall. And members of the public that wish to attend this meeting may do so by joining us here at the Great Hall. And they do so by joining us via the Zoom webinar platform, the login information for which is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Or if they only want to observe the meeting, they may tune into Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public are also reminded pursuant to Massachusetts general law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. We are aware of a recording being made by the local scene. We are not aware of any other recordings at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. Moving right along to the licenses. Any questions or comments on those? Motion.
If my colleagues do not have any questions or comments, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion at this time to approve the listed licenses as a group.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Canty.
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Golden.
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Administrative notes one through...
Twelve.
Twelve.
I'd make the motion that we move the notes.
I would ask that we take administrative note three separately, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, duly noted. So, one, two, and through twelve, three, not included.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Canty.
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Golden.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, as to administrative note three, I would like to make a motion at this time.
Okay, so be it.
I would move that pursuant to the authority granted by Article 10 of the Fall Annual Town Meeting held on October 19th, 2024, and any other authority pertaining hereto, the Select Board vote to acquire the real property off of Black Cat Road and Water Course Road consisting of approximately 90.15 acres of land, more or less. Such property be held under the care, custody, management, and control of the Conservation Commission for open space purposes pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 44B, and to thereafter grant or otherwise approve a conservation restriction being placed on said property, and that the Chair of the Select Board or his designee be authorized to execute a purchase and sale agreement and any and all other documents necessary or convenient for said acquisition. All such documents to be subject to approval by the Town's attorney.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Golden.
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Canty.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous again. That's all the administrative note. Moving on to the agenda items. FY '26 budget review. Mr. Brandisi.
Greg, good evening, Board. Derek Mazzie, Town Manager. So this is our annual budget presentation. We'll present the budget this evening. We'll come back in January for a final ratification before this budget moves on to Advisory and Finance Committee. So I'm here to present this year's FY '26 budget at a high level. I would ask if the Board wants to get into some of the detail of the budget that's not presented this evening. Ms. Barrett, who are our finance directors here this evening, that were more than happy to set up a time to go through each line item. So to start off tonight's budget presentation, I'm not going to read all this to you. These are the, these are some of the Select Board goals and priorities that have been actively worked on. These, as you know, were approved by the, by the Board this past August. And these are the ones that align nicely with the FY '26 budget. When Ms. Barrett sends out the budget guidance in the beginning of this process, at the top of the list, she asks all departments to ensure that any budget requests align with the Board's goals and priorities. So I, we have listed here a number of, of the goals that are being actively worked on. And I've tried to keep the Board apprised during my weekly Town Manager reports. But as you can see here, Health and Human Services is working on their health assessment and their PAC management plan. The Planning Department is nearing the end of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. As you know, the PD is now in the process of implementing their Body One Camera Program. And moving on, we've created the Groundwater Discharge Committee. We just cut the rib, broke ground in the Jenny Pond Project. Mr. Gould is actively designing and engineering the Town Wolf Way and the Downtown Residency Projects. As far as financial planning, you will hear a couple times tonight, our commitment to a number of stabilization programs and to our payment management program. And Casey Kennedy, our new communications coordinator, is doing the best that she can to, on a regular basis, keep our community informed. And then, you know, moving on here, as far as economic development, IT is working with the downtown businesses to develop a downtown security program, camera security program. We are working on the acquisition of the DCR property. We just launched, through the Director of Planning, the master planning for the Holtec property. And we just completed this past fall a long-term agreement with the cruise line industry that I would say by 20, calendar year '26, we should be bringing revenue upwards of about $150,000 per year. Infrastructure projects, as you know, the cemetery project is moving forward. Memorial Hall feasibility project is moving forward. Again, I mentioned the roadway program. We are investing approximately $5 million of, between free cash and raise and appropriate, towards roads. That includes, that would then include Chapter $90 and any money we get from the millionaire's tax. So we could be looking at upwards of $7 million of investment of roads this year alone. And then you'll talk a little bit more about succession planning. Unfortunately, our finance director will retire someday, so we want to make sure that when that day comes, we are fully prepared. So getting into the, into the meat of tonight's presentation, again, you saw that our finances are aligning nicely with the Board's goals and priorities. But this is a slide that we've been presenting the last couple years. And I draw your attention to the column that's highlighted here, because I really feel like that's the focus area. So this slide represents new revenues. And so when we think about our annual budget, you know, it, it's really focused on the new revenues and our ability to have to live within those means. And so you'll see right here at the top of this column, if I can get there, the new revenues for property taxes, which is a 200% increase plus new growth, is approximately $8.4 million. Local seats this year are budgeted $2.2 million. Indirect reimbursement is $90,000. For a total amount of $10.8 million. We have a slide, we'll talk a little bit about state aid, but there's not a lot to talk about state aid. So we budgeted at zero, like we did last year at this time. As you know, the governor's budget isn't released until January. And if anything is true to form, we're not going to get excited when we see the governor's budget. So we hope the legislature will help us out, like they did last year. So we keep that, we keep that at zero every year in hopes that we get an increase. And then we could apportion that between the school side and the town side when that budget is finalized, usually July time period. So we have approximately $10.8 million of new revenue this year. And I have to say, before I talk about the split, we had a very collaborative effort this year with the school committee. I know Select Board member Canty attended a number of meetings. The school superintendent, our finance team, really came together. I would say, Mr. Canty, we really started these conversations in July time period of thinking about how we could share the new revenues so that it's, it's equity across both the town and the school side. And so the conversation that took place over the course of many months was that, let's look at the, the current apportionment of the budget, which represents a 39% on the town side and a 61% on the school side. And what we said during those discussions is that the new revenues would be shared in that manner. The school department, school superintendent, school committee members agreed that that was a fair approach. We thought that was a fair approach. And then it forces us, to whatever that number is, to, to live within our means, right? So you can't spend what you don't have. And so you'll see here, so the distribution was about $4.2 million on the town side, based upon this 10.8 number, and about $6.6 million on the school side. And then after we, we make our deductions for fixed costs and cherry sheet assessments, we have a bottom line number. So you see those deductions there. We have a bottom line number of $2.8 million on the town side and $5.8 million on the school side for a total share of $8.6 million. So what I mean by this is then, once we, we went through that exercise and we made that determination, we said to ourselves on the town side, we have $2.8 million this year to balance our budget. And to the school, we said, you have $5.8 million to balance your budget. And I have to say, like every year, it's never easy. There's never a lot of money left over. In fact, I'll talk a little bit about what we had to go through on the town side in order to balance the budget. But what I can tell you, that after going through this, this process, the balance, the budget is balanced. There have not been any layoffs, and we've been able to maintain critical services. So, so this is the, the total budget. I hope you can see this. I know it's tough to read. But on the, for the general fund, it's about, total budget is about $291 million, which represents an increase of $10 million year over year, and that, which is about 3.6% increase from last year. And then when we look at the cherry sheet offsets, the budget increases at $303 million. Again, $10.8 million from last year, which is a 3.7% increase from last year. And then if we just break down the enterprise funds, you can see that our enterprise accounts for about $21 million of expenses, which is an increase of about $420,000 from last year. So we have a total budget this year, we're proposing of $325,622,000, which represents a total increase from last year of $11.2, I'll call it $11.3 million, representing 3. almost 6% increase from last year. So that's a 40,000-foot level of the increases, and that represents both the schools and the town. This is a slide that you've seen every year. This is the 61% breakdown on the school side. It's about $184 million. On the town side, it's about $120 million. And so there's the apportionment of 61% to 39%. It's difficult to read, but I'll send this slide deck to folks, and we'll post this on the Town website. But you can see the breakdown of how that, how those dollars are spent between salaries, fringe benefits, and other expenses. So these are the revenues and how those are broken down. And as you, as you all know, property taxes represent approximately 73% of our revenues. Our enterprise fund represents approximately 7% of our revenues. State aid is 11%. Local receipts, 7%, and any other funds at 2%. And again, something else we present every year, so we look at, you know, what's driving the cost of our budget. And as you all know, it's people. 48% of the budget is salaries, with another 22% a fringe for those individuals, which is about 70% of the budget. And then if you include this 7% of debt, I mean, those are really fixed costs. So when you look at it, 77% of our budget is already fixed. Before we even start putting pen to paper, we know that 77% of our budget is fixed. And this 23% is, in large part, are fixed as well. These are the utility expenses and other expenses that departments need to run their operations. So there's not a lot of room to make cuts. And what I will tell you, as far as the process that we had to undergo this year on the town side, side, the total budget request on the town side was about $5 million. And as you know, we only had a two and a half million dollar spend. So we were double, so we had to cut almost two and a half million dollars out of this year's budget in order to balance it. And so after we went through our exercise, we had about $400,000. Was it vacancy, about $400,000 vacancy factor? And so we, we instituted this kind of creative idea on how to, you know, come up with that other $400,000, and it's something that's called a vacancy factor. And so, and we had two choices. We can implement the vacancy factor, or we could just reduce the number of personnel by $400,000. But we thought that if you think about how a vacancy factor works, it gives the department heads the flex, the flexibility and, and the, the management rights of how they want to manage their personnel. You know, so you, using, for example, say, $150,000 vacancy factor was assigned to the The choice is, you know, do we lay off three DPW employees, or do we just assign $150,000 vacancy factor? And then allows the DPW director to manage his budget in such a way that they will, they will hire their employees during the course of the year, but hold back the hiring of those employees until they fill that void, fill that vacancy factor. And so it allows us to maintain full level of staffing, but it requires us to manage the budget in such a way that we just can't hire on July 1st. We have to delay hiring until we, until we meet that, that void. And so by implementing that idea, we've been able to come up with a balanced budget. So some of the priorities that, again, you know, coming directly from the board's goals that are in this year's budget. Last year, we were able to contribute a half a million dollars in the nuclear stabilization account. We continued that trend this year with $500,000. And same goes for the facility stabilization account. Last year was $500,000. This year, there's an additional $500,000. And last year, the capital road improvement plan, we were able to increase the general fund contribution by $1.5 million. And this year, we were able to increase that to $2.6 million. So that's an increase from last year of about approximately $1.1 million. So heavy investment in our roads infrastructure this year, like I had started out saying, you know, between the two and a half million dollars here and two and a half million dollars of free cash, you know, we have $5 million coming on the town side, plus any chapter 90 or millionaire's tax funds we get as well. So last year, we, we, we spent about $6 million, I believe, on capital, on roads. And so we plan on continuing that trend until we can bring our road rating to an acceptable So as I mentioned earlier, I made a comment about state aid. So we level funded state aid this year at zero. Last year, the governor's proposed budget was released the end of January. I think it had a net increase to the town of $180,000, which is insignificant. By the time it went through the House and the Senate, we, we received state aid increase of about $1.1 million last year. So in our commitment last year at this budget presentation was that, you know, any new net state aid, we would apportion those funds with a 39-61% split. And so, again, that's our commitment moving forward. It'd be great that we get something north of $1 million, like we did last year, and then we would apportion it appropriately. But more to come on state aid over the next six months. So, so to wrap things up, just some of the budget highlights. As I mentioned, you know, we doing the best that we can to meet the expectations of the board's goals and priorities. We, I mentioned a couple of times already that we continue to invest in our road infrastructure. We continue to invest in our facilities and nuclear stabilization accounts. We continue, as we started three years ago, to focus on succession planning. And so the assistant finance director position has been built into this year's budget. One thing that is notable, and I just want to bring to the board's attention, is that we are eliminating the lifeguards at White Horse Beach this year, and we're replacing the lifeguards with a beach supervisor position, something for discussion. This was a recommendation by the Commission of Health and Human Services, so we thought we'd bring that before the board. The recreation director has stated that many of the beachgoers at White Horse Beach do no longer recreate in the guarded area. They've really been outside of the guarded area. Last year, up until last year, we would have lifeguards seven days a week. Last year, we reduced the, those times to Friday, Saturday, Sundays. And we've saw, we've seen a dip in the number of users in that area. So the recreation director, through the commissioner, is recommending to remove the lifeguards and replace those individuals with a beach supervisor. So we'll always have somebody there as our eyes and ears. I can always call 911 if there's a, if there was a concern. But that is something for the board to consider this, this budget cycle. In addition, this is our second year, this will be our second year of collective bargaining. And so this budget fully funds all of those collective bargaining agreements, all but one union have settled. This is also the third year, the PEC agreement. We have seen considerable savings with the six-year PEC agreement over the last three years. And FY '26, we are projecting a net savings to health insurance line item by $1.5 million. And because of the PEC agreement, couple that with continued OPEB trust fund contributions of $1.3 million, our liability, our OPEB liability, has gone from a high watermark back in 2022 of $941 million. That has been reduced to $567 million. Still very high. I would say it's still probably in the top five in Massachusetts, but we are making progress with reducing that liability. And then the last thing I'll mention, as far as budget highlights, part of the town's financial plan is to continue to invest in our general stabilization account. We have committed over $500,000 over the last couple of years, each and every year. And we continue to invest in the general stabilization account until we reach the 5% goal of our operating budget. This is a recommendation by GFOA. This was a recommendation by Department of Revenue here in Massachusetts, that all cities and towns have a general stabilization account that is, that equates to 5% of the general operating budget. As you know, the general stabilization account is to be used for a rainy day, and so we want to ensure that we have, have those funds available if and when we need them someday. So in closing, again, I invite the board, if they would like more detailed discussion on any one of these items, I'm available to meet with our finance director at any time. Our, the select board is expected to take a vote to ratify this budget in, on January 7th, and send that to Advisory Finance Committee, which there'll be a joint meeting held on January 14th with the school committee. And I'd also say this to end this, that I want to be very clear with the subcommittees of A&amp;F, that my recommend, my advice would be that they could remove line items in the budget. I ask that they do not support any increases in the budget, because if they do that, it'll, it'll, it'll alter the 61-39 split. And one of the, one of the sides will go down, the other one will increase. So in order to maintain that equity, certainly, you know, A&amp;F will do their due diligence, but I'm asking them not to add anything into their subcommittee budgets. And that certainly, if they think that something is not warranted, you know, we are certainly willing to accept their proposed decreases, but not willing to accept any proposed increases. So that's all I have for this evening. As you know, Lynn Barr, our finance director's here to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, Derek, a couple of small ones for you and maybe a couple for Lynn. I'll keep it brief. Who's the one union out still outstanding?
That would be the OP union, so our professional union.
Okay. How many incremental part-time or full-time employees is the town side of the budget increasing?
So complicated question, but I'll, I'll answer it this way. So we have one position we're adding to the harbor master's office. It's a wharf finger position. That position will be funded 50% from the general fund and 50% from the new revolving account that we're proposing at town meeting, that is taking in the, the monies from the cruise line.
So you said-
That's a 50-50 split position.
A wharf what?
Wharf finger position. It's, it's like a, it's like one step below an assistant harbor master.
Okay. I never heard that term before.
So that's, that's one new position added. We also are reinstituting the Cal director position. That would be funded 50% from the Cal's formula, state formula grant, and the other 50% will come from the general fund. We have two new IT job description positions, but both of the, one position is being funded by eliminating an existing position within the department. So that's a net zero. And then there's another position that's being created in the IT department that is being funded through the reduction of operational expenses. So that's a net zero as well. And then we are adding the deputy director of finance position as well.
Okay. You brought up, the, I was going to go to the next question, is the ACL contract where in a couple of years, it might be generating upwards of $150,000 a year in revenue. So our goal is to have two-thirds of that?
That's correct.
Okay. And we don't need a home rule petition, we just need an active town meeting to support the new fund?
We have two articles that'll go to town meeting, one to create a revolving account, and then one to set the limit for the revolving account. And so as you pointed out, two-thirds of the cruise line revenue would be deposited into that revolving account. In this case, they use some for personnel, and then the other revenue would be used for infrastructure improvements for the wharf.
Okay, so I guess the last question is for Lynn. So obviously phenomenal work, I believe, on the contracts, the individuals in this board that participated in that process, the individuals, you know, the union heads to come to this three-year agreement, and to see that liability reduced by almost a billion, or almost $400 million, is a significant improvement. Okay, that, you know, credit due to those individuals involved. I guess my, my question is, Lynn, what is, if you don't know this, you can provide us later on, but what is the current balance of our pension fund? And what is the, you know, I think we're under a mandate to have it fully funded by 2040, but God willing, we're, are we still in the 2034 to 2035 range?
Yeah, 2035. So in the books that you receive from our office, in the section for the pension, there's a, there's a memo in there that talks about what the liability is, what the amortization schedule is to pay for it, and it is, the unfunded liability is expected to be paid off in 2035, based on our most recent valuation.
And what is, what is the, in our budget this year, the proposed contribution towards the pension?
It is north of $21 million.
Okay. And what would it be if our pension liability had already been met? About four?
It reduces down to, you just pay the normal cost at that point.
Yep.
And that is in that spreadsheet. I don't have the numbers memorized here, but I'm going to say it might go down to like seven, between seven and 10 million.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Gould?
Derek, thank you for the presentation. So the split between the schools and the town side is staying the same as, in your proposed budget as it was last year?
That's correct.
And the, have the schools agreed to that split for fiscal year 26?
They have. It's been a, it's been a collaborative effort. And, you know, I want to thank the school superintendent and the school committee, because they've been, you know, with us every step of the way, supporting this, I guess, this new philosophy on budgeting.
That's great. You mentioned the vacancy factor. Can you walk me through that one more time?
Sure. So we had approximately $400,000 that we were still short in the budget, and so normally, when you've gone through the budget, you made all the cuts that you can without affecting, you know, critical operations, the next step is to look at existing positions and just either unfund them, or, or, you know, in some cases, have to eliminate them and lay people off. So the vacancy factors is a, is a way to assign a negative number to a department budget. And the way they fill that negative number is by slowing down their hiring process. So for example, if they want to hire an engineer, we'll say on July 1st, and they have a $50,000 vacancy factor, maybe they have to wait until January 1st until they fill that, that deficit. And then once that deficit's filled, then they can go ahead and hire. So it's a management tool?
Yep.
Good.
No, sorry, good.
No, I was just gonna say, it's a management tool we use for budgeting, but it also gives, it gives it back to the department heads to manage their budget in a way that, that they need to in order to effectuate their operations.
So, so do each of the department heads have their own factor?
There are three departments. Do you want to go through which departments have the vacancy factor, Lynn?
Yeah, so what we looked at was, we have about 49 vacancies right now. So we looked at those departments that have those vacancies, and we computed the factor based on 15% of the salary value of those vacancies, and it made up about this $400,000 amount.
So which departments will be affected by the factor?
Police, DP, all of DPW. So the divisions in DPW is highway, cemetery, parks, and forestry, and building maintenance. And then there was a factor in, there may have been one other department, other than DPW and police. But those are primarily where we have all of our vacancies.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So the, if I followed your math correctly, Derek, it sounds like the town is adding a net two positions? Because there are two that are in IT that are a wash.
Yeah.
And then there's a half position for the harbor master and a half position for Cal.
Yep.
Okay. That's, that won't be affected by the vacancy factor?
No, because of, as Ms. Barr pointed out, those departments don't have vacancy factors assigned to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. So I was involved, as you pointed out, in those communications with the, the schools, and has been very collaborative, which has been refreshing, and I think both sides have, have appreciated that, and we have committed on both sides, and we are aware on both sides is going to create, you know, we're going to have to plan for it, that we're living within that 61, that 39 on our respective sides of that. Can you go back a couple of slides? I think, this slide. So, so on this slide, you've got, at the top, you've got your general fund, top two-thirds, and then at the bottom, you've got your, your enterprise fund. So, I mean, I know what the enterprise is different than the general fund, but lots of people viewing may not. But, so the enterprise funds, sewer, particularly sewer waters, solid waste, and airport, are essentially town-run, private-esque businesses that are meant to be essentially self-funded by the, the charges that they pay, that they, that they charge to the people that consume whatever the service they provide. So if you're in the sewer, you pay a rate, that's supposed to self-fund that, that keeps some money aside for capital improvements and to cover their operating, just like as if they were a private enterprise. Same with, if you're in the water system, if you're, do solid waste through the town, and if you use the airport through fuel sales, through rent. And then cable access enterprise, that's, that's a little different than the others, because that's, we don't, it's not really paid by specific rate payers, per se, but if you have a cable bill through Verizon or Comcast, you're paying that like local access fee, or whatever they're calling that these days, and that's going in to pay for the local scene, so everybody can watch this and the other things that local scene provides to us. Would that be an accurate summation of how money goes into the? Would that be an accurate summation of how money goes into the enterprise funds?
That is, yeah, that is very detailed, very accurate. I would say that, you know, those enterprise accounts, they basically generate their own revenue and they use the revenue that they generate, they go back into this very specific account to pay for their operations.
Okay, so if you're, if you're a Plymouth resident but you don't use any of those enterprise services and you've already cut the cord on your cable bill, you're not paying anything into that enterprise component, right?
That is correct.
So, the top general fund, that's what you're talking about when we're talking about like the tax rate and what people are paying?
That is correct, that two-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars.
Okay, could you go back, it's one or two slides before this? This one, actually. So, just to highlight again, I know you explained it later, but, you know, we got state aid on there as zero, but we're gonna, any new money basically that we found? We found a, you know, if we opened up a drawer and we found a hundred thousand dollars in it, we'd split that sixty-one, thirty-nine between the town and the schools.
That is correct.
But state aid, you know, we don't know what that's gonna be, sometimes it's lean, sometimes it's fat. We're probably in a leaner type of time than other times, but it is zero up there, but whatever that number comes in is gonna go in sixty-one, thirty-nine.
Right, once we get the final state budget, which is usually summer, July time period, whatever the net new state aid, you know, so you use a hundred thousand dollars as an example, we would split that one accordingly. Sixty-one percent to the schools, thirty-nine percent to the town.
Okay. And then, the, you mentioned later the, a message to the FinCom budget subcommittees?
Yes.
So, no increases, only decrease, but I would, if we did, if they did decrease, that could also impact the split, potentially. So we really want to defend the budget as presented, right?
That would be ideal, yes.
Yes.
The ideal model was to, you know, accept the budget as presented, a lot of, as you know, a lot of work has gone into this budget. There's a lot of conversations and budget reductions in order to get where we are.
Okay. So I, I hope we, I'm sure a version of this will be presented to them at that January meeting, but I hope too, and I'm certainly willing to assist, that we pitch that to the FinCom subcommittees so that they don't get in there and tinker in a way that we don't want them to tinker, at least not without good reason.
Right, yes, and I would appreciate any support on that.
I would be happy, happy to help in any way that I can on that front. And then, nuclear mitigation, we're adding another five-hundred thousand, do we know what the balance will be after that five-hundred thousand?
It's gonna be a little north of ten, I'm looking at Ms. Barrett. If I were a guessing person, I'd say around ten-five, ten-six, but we'll double-check that. While we wait for that number, I want to publicly thank, I've already thanked the school superintendent and school committee for their collaboration, but, you know, it seems to be said for the department heads, I mean, this is another challenging year and, you know, they've done a great job of understanding the situation that we're in and managing their very lean budget in such a way, that's been very helpful.
So the nuclear mitigation currently has a balance of nine-point-eight million. So another five-hundred would bring it over ten. And then, I just wanted to clarify, on the vacancy factor, it actually is a total of three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. So, that's what it came down to. And it was just police and those DPW divisions. Now John, the normal cost in 2035 is seven, seven-point-six million, based on the most recent valuation. So it's, in 2035, the unfunded liability would get paid off and then the appropriation according to the valuation would decrease from forty-four million down to seven-point-six million.
Okay. But I was, and that's great, I love that Lynn, but I was, what I was saying is hypothetically, if we didn't have, if the liability had already been met, the obligation, what would it be in today's dollars and for the FY '26? It would probably be in the three-and-a-half to five million range. You're saying in 2035, it's going down to seven, correct?
Right, twenty, in 2036, it would be seven-point-six million.
Down from forty-four.
Right. So, in 2026, it's almost twenty-two million.
Yep, I just saw that number, but I was saying hypothetically, if we had already met our obligation, what would that?
Right, yeah.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I mean, and I just want to be clear, I mean, every city in town has an unfunded liability and every, everyone is, we have a requirement to get it paid off by 2040, so that is the drop-dead date. And you want to leave yourself a cushion because of the market rates and, you know, things like that that could happen. So Plymouth had, is on target to have it paid off by 2035.
Thank you.
So, that would, that nuclear mitigation, circling back to that, we're at nine-point-eight now with five-hundred thousand more would be at ten-point-three million, which is good and obviously, we don't know exactly how much we're gonna need to purchase some or all of that whole tech parcel, if and when that becomes available on the market. But we, I know we estimated between thirty-five and fifty million back when we negotiated the pilot and the expanded right of first refusal, so having ten-point-three in an account and adding to that over time is certainly, obviously we can get some grant funding and some other help from other sources, but the more we have on hand to be able to pay with cash, the better. So, that's very encouraging, so, thank you for that.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions, Charlie?
Just one quick one, Derek, the roads stabilization, you're gonna put an extra, was it one-point-one-two or something? One-point-one-five into the-
Right, so last year, we, from the tax levy, we include an additional one-point-five last year.
Right.
And this year, we're gonna add to that number of one-point-one. So, from the, from the tax levy, we are appropriating two-point-six million dollars and then an additional two-point-five million dollars from free cash. So we'll be north of five million dollars on the town side, plus chapter ninety, plus the millionest tax, all towards roads this year.
Right, and what's, what's already in there? Because I think that's substantial.
Yeah, so we're doing two things right now for roads that are, one's being funded through excess motor vehicle excise that goes into free cash and we vote that money to go into the pavement management stabilization fund. That fund right now is earmarked to pay for the fifteen million dollars of previous roadwork that town meeting has already authorized to borrow and that DPW has performed. So that fund pays the principal and interest on that debt. With interest rates rising, last year, we took an approach of, let's spend our actual dollars that are in the budget towards roads versus having to incur interest costs. So, we're using, you know, general fund revenues, call it motor vehicle excise, towards roads. A dollar for dollar of getting our money's worth out of it without incurring any interest. So we're doing two different things.
So, my point is, I'll make is that we're spending the money where it's supposed to be spent.
Yeah.
And it's, we're gonna be able to do more, more roadwork, which I know that's a big issue in the town. So that's a good thing, it's a positive thing, so nice job on that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I only have one as it refers to the roads. I don't know what the policy is and we don't need to answer it tonight, but before a road is repaved and all that good stuff like water pipes, Nix Rock Road, they just did that road over and now the water pipe broke. So I guess my question is, if we could check on the policy, I'm all for the fixing the roads, but not at the expense of tearing them up again once we do them, so. And I know accidents happen, believe me, I've been sitting here for a while, but the question is, you know, is there a check point where they check this stuff before we, that's all I ask, and you don't need to answer that tonight, but...
Yeah, and typically they do, you know, I know that there's been some situation, I think it was Winter Street a couple of years back, where there was some old water main that was not replaced and then we had that major water break at Winter Street. So, that is part of the protocol, to look at the existing water main to see if it needs to be replaced before they do, you know, put a new surface down. So, I think in this situation, Nix Rock Road, I'm guessing that that was just more of a environmental factor for it to break.
Okay, no problem, thank you. And a very good job to cover in yourself and the school department for working together to come up with a common number, a balanced budget. So that's good.
And Ms. Barrett and her team, I mean, they, they put all this stuff together, this is months' worth of work. Hopefully Lynn can take a break now that this, we've gone through tonight, so thank you Lynn for everything.
Yes, thank you Lynn, the department. The next item is the HERO Act, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to present two proposed articles for the annual town meeting happening in April. So just a brief overview of the HERO Act, signed into law by Governor Moore Healy in August of this year. The HERO Act is short for an act honoring, empowering, recognizing service members and veterans. It included thirty-plus provisions aimed at improving the quality of life for veterans in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The two that I'm most concerned with are local options, allowing communities to increase property tax benefits for veterans. The two subject clauses that I'm looking at are clause twenty-two I and clause twenty-two J of Mass General Law, fifty-nine, section five. Fifty-nine, section five describes the various exemptions that can be granted at the local level for property tax abatement. Here in Plymouth, we have, we operate with clauses twenty-two and twenty-two E. Twenty-two covers veterans with a service-related disability between ten percent and ninety-nine percent, or the recipient of a Purple Heart, or the surviving spouse of either of those. The twenty-two E folks are veterans with a service-related disability of a hundred percent, or their surviving spouses as well. The HERO Act expanded our options, so the first is twenty-two I. It provides an annual cost of living or COLA adjustment to the amount of tax exemption granted to veterans on their primary residence. It's important to note that this, this can't be used for anything other than the home that you live in. So if you're a veteran that qualifies for one of these and you have an investment property in the community, you can't apply that to your, you can't apply your exemption to that property because it has to be your primary domicile. The COLA is determined each year by the Department of Revenue. The Commissioner of Revenue informs each of the assessors' offices across the state as to what the COLA is for the fiscal year. It's determined using the Consumer Price Index. Clause twenty-two J allows municipalities to increase the exemption amount granted to qualifying veterans, again on their primary residence. That, that increase can be up to a hundred percent of the existing exemption. So how this all will all play out in Plymouth, the first box that you see up here is what happened in fiscal year '24. We use fiscal year '24 because the exemptions are not due for fiscal year '25 until April, so we don't know what those total numbers are just about yet. So, going across here, this describes each of the clauses, the number of veterans that are associated with each, the base exemption amount that we give to those veterans, and lastly, the total amount that we, that we've granted based on these exemptions. You can see that under clause twenty-two, we were able to exempt for four-hundred-and-seventy-eight veterans with a base amount of four-hundred dollars, a total sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, two-hundred dollars. Under the twenty-two Es, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-three veterans with a one-hundred percent disability or their surviving spouses. Those folks received a one-thousand dollar, a one-thousand dollar exemption each, for a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. So the total impact to the overlay for veterans exemptions for fiscal year '24 was four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, two-hundred dollars. Now, the next three boxes are essentially three different scenarios. So we could do nothing based on the HERO Act and these numbers would largely stay about the same, they would be relatively stable. If we were to just give a cost of living adjustment increase, I won't go through each of these numbers again, because they don't change a whole lot, but the base exemption would go up from four-hundred dollars for our twenty-twos to four-hundred-and-fourteen. That would be an additional impact to our overlay, which the overlay account, for folks who don't know, is what we fund for exemptions and abatements for various taxes here in town. The, the twenty-two Es would go up to about one-thousand-and-thirty-four dollars and our total impact to the overlay would be about fourteen thousand dollars, so very minimal impact. So we could do just that. We could also just offer them some form of increase to the base exemption amount based on a percentage increase. Mr. Brindisi's previous presentation has accounted for us increasing the, the base exemption amount to fif- by a factor of fifty percent. So for folks who receive the four-hundred dollars, their exemption amount would jump up to six-hundred dollars. The total impact to the overlay, if we took the second approach, would be about two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. And then the last scenario here is if we do both a cost of living increase and a fifty percent increase to the base amount. It's hard to see here, but that amount is, I think, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, is that right Chris?
Two-thirty-three.
Two-thirty-three, five-forty-three, I think it says. So it's a, it's still a relatively, thanks, thanks Lee. So it's still a relatively small number. It is about fifty percent more than what we had been doing in the past, but it's, this is a population that has contributed so much to our community and to our state and our country that I think it's worth us giving them a little extra support. One thing I do want to note is that the cost of living increase is something that happens annually, so although it's, you know, the base amount is only going up to four-fourteen in this scenario and six-twenty in this scenario, that will continue to increase each year based on what the Commissioner of Revenue sends to us. We do anticipate that we may bring this back to get the veterans up to the full one-hundred percent allowed, based on twenty-two J. But for now, in order to be conservative with the budget, we decided that we would, that we would increase the base amount by fifty percent. So I'm presenting two articles here. The first is to allow the town to decide whether or not it'll accept clause twenty-two I in, as part of the HERO Act, which is the piece that allows us to provide an annual increase based on the CPI. The second article is to see if the town will accept the clause twenty-two J, which will allow us, in our case, to go up on the base amount by fifty percent. We're presenting it as two articles so that town meeting can make the decision as to whether they'd like to do one or both of them. And with that, I'll take any questions that the board might have.
Mr. Canty? Can you go back to slide four, thank you. So, is, did you say that the baby blue or powder blue is what is incorporated into the budget, not the more-
Both of them are.
Both?
Yes.
So we could, we could vote for either and it would be fine?
Correct.
Okay.
Either or both and it's incorporated into the budget that was just presented.
The dark blue also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the higher amount, the two-thirty-three, has been factored into this budget.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and can you go back to the article language?
Town council has seen this language and has no- Town Council has seen this language and has no issues with it. There may be some small stylistic changes, but she says that this will be an appropriate act, an appropriate action to put in front of Town Meeting.
Okay. But Town Meeting would only, in the end, vote for one of these two?
No, they could accept both. If they accept both, you'll see us in scenario, in the dark blue scenario.
Okay. So, and if they accept the first one, it's the baby blue?
So first one puts us here.
Okay.
Just, so just the first one puts us in this gray box.
Yep.
Just the second article puts us in this baby blue box.
Okay.
If they accept both articles, we'll be in the dark blue box.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, Mr. Blitzer.
Yeah, David, great job outlining this for us. So my question is, if you look at the second one.
The second article?
Yes. If, if that is approved and the 50% is added to the base, is that one time and then that article becomes obsolete?
Yeah, so, so, well, not obsolete. So if it, if, it depends on what's accepted by Town Meeting. So if Town Meeting accepts just that 22j, the second article, it's a, it's a one-time increase. So then fiscal year 26, you'll see this. Fiscal year 27, you'll see this. Fiscal year 28, and so on. If they accept both articles, it is compounding. So each year, they'll see an increase because of that cost-of-living adjustment.
Right, but on the base, they, they can't come back in subsequent years and keep bumping it up every few years 50%?
We could. We could, in a, in a subsequent Town Meeting, try to get that additional 50%.
That's my point. So the protection is, if it's going to go up another 50%, it has to go back to Town Meeting.
Has to go back to Town Meeting. Yep. Only Town Meeting can approve it.
You're looking for?
David, great job. Anything we can do to help our vets. So this, this helps disabled vets.
Yeah, so these two clauses affect folks who have a service-related disability. So it's not, it's not all veterans, to your point, Mr. Blitzer, but it, it helps folks who were, who suffered a disability as a result of their service in the military.
Okay, well, that's, okay, I get it. Okay, great. Great job on this. I think it's about time that we do something to help our vets. So anyway, thank you. Great job on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I make a motion, looking for the board to support both of these articles, send them to Spring Town Meeting of '25.
So would that be a motion to include both of these articles on the annual Town Meeting warrant and recommend Town Meeting approve them?
Yes. Does this require two separate votes? Or can we kill this in one swoop, fell swoop?
I think you can do one, one motion for both articles.
You could.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for, Mr. Canty.
I would second that motion.
For this, okay, for discussion.
Motion by Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. Canty, discussion. Mr. Blitzer?
Yes. I think it's about time. I think we have to support this. These folks have given themselves their service. They struggle. I've, I've heard the stories. They struggle to pay their bills. The health costs have gone up, prescription costs, just the cost of living, and, you know, they, they struggle to stay in their homes. So it's about time that we do this. The state finally gave us this opportunity, and I think as, as a town, we should, we should, because we have quite a few vets in the town, disabled folks. So it's about time that we support and help them. So I'm, I'm fully on board with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, David, for presenting this and putting this forward. I also support this. I think that I've known a number of service members with various levels of disability, some physical, some mental health-related, some a combination of both. So, you know, many, many vets, whether you realize it or not, do suffer from some level of service-related disability, and they've given a lot to our country, and I think it's time that we give something back to them and make it a little easier for them to be here at home now that they're back here. So I'm fully in support of this, and I imagine it will enjoy broad support at Town Meeting as well, or at least I am cautiously optimistic that it will. But thank you.
As mine. Any other comments? Seeing none. Thank you, David. Mr. Goldman? Mr. Mahoney, yes. Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Mr. Canty? Charter amendment.
Okay, so I have two articles related to charter amendments and one general bylaw proposal that we are looking, I am looking to put forward that would help us plan ahead and get ahead of some issues that we know exist, some of which we touched upon earlier tonight, some of which we saw at the last Town Meeting. But without further ado, let's go forward. So there are two articles related to potential future consolidation efforts between the town and the schools. We talked earlier about the collaborative talks we've had with school administration and members of the leadership of the school committee about having a more collaborative focus going forward to avoid any consternation between the two sides of our community. You know, for many folks that live in this community, there is not a distinction between the schools and the town. We're all getting one tax bill. We're all paying that tax bill, and the decisions of both sides are impacting that tax rate and that tax bill to residents. But as a practical matter, we have our things on our side of the budget. They have their things on their side of the budget, and that's how it's been for a number of years. We're looking to work together and collaborate more effectively and get out ahead of some known expenses on both sides by having more collaborative talks. And part of that has been considering the potential for future consolidation. So we're not looking at, we don't have any definite plans for consolidation right now. We've talked about having a study done to see what the benefits of potential consolidation would be so that we can have a conversation about that. But the issue that we are confronted with, and it was brought forward as part of the larger charter review discussion at the last Town Meeting, was that in the charter, there is a provision that the schools have superintendents over their buildings, grounds, and facilities, as opposed to it being in the bylaw or being subject to Massachusetts General Law, which also allows for the schools to have it unless the town makes another decision. But under the charter, the schools must do it, which would prevent, if we did have an agreement in, say, two years from now with the schools to have a consolidation effort, we would be unable to implement that without changing the charter provision. So we are looking to remove that particular requirement from the charter, but we are not looking to change the status quo of who controls what at this time. We are looking to put into the general bylaw language that would maintain the status quo as it currently exists, for now, potentially forever, because we don't know for a fact we're going to ever actually want to consolidate. But by having it in the general bylaw, we can change that at the next Town Meeting after an agreement is reached, if it is ever reached. Whereas if it remains in the charter, it's going to take 18 months to two years to ever effectuate an actual change, and by then you might have a different select board, you might have a different school committee, a different school administration, and whatever agreement you have may have died on the vine while we were waiting to get this out of the charter. We have talked about this. We had a meeting before Town Meeting with the schools, and they were in agreement of the concept of this. In the event that it did not pass at Town Meeting as part of a bundle of other proposals that were presented along with it, this was part of a bundle that did not pass. I know the, how the charter played out at Town Meeting was confusing for some. So this is one of the things that did not pass, so that's why I'm looking to bring it forward, so that, taken on its own and evaluated on its own, you can see that it is a good idea for future planning. School administration is also in agreement, and we have worked, both myself and Kate McKay, Town Council, have worked with Adam Blaisdell over at Schools to iron out the specifics of the language that you're going to see in it so that both sides are in agreement as to this. Obviously, if and when consolidation is ever implemented, it would also involve discussions with our employees and the unions that represent those employees. So nobody is looking to steamroll any of that, but that is something that would have to happen later in the process if and when we decide that we actually do want to start implementing some type of consolidation, what that might look like. But this is just planning to make that a possibility for us to go forward. Now, there is also one additional charter amendment I am proposing, and that is to allow a future charter review committee to propose bylaws to Town Meeting at the same time that they're proposing charter changes. And that's because one of the discussions that was a frequent issue at this Town Meeting and the charter review process that preceded it was there's things in the charter that should be in the bylaws, but the charter review committee couldn't, wasn't given clear indication that they could propose general bylaws contemporaneous with their recommended charter changes. And I don't think it makes sense that they can't do both, because if they want to remove something from the charter, obviously, that's going to give consternation to some folks of, well, what's going to happen? If you take it out of the charter, where's it going to go? And it creates the charter being sort of like a lobster trap. You can get in, but you, you put stuff in it, you can't get stuff out of it. And the charter, over time, has become kind of a bloated HR manual in many ways that is not reflective of what a charter actually should be. Putting things in bylaws allows them, like we're seeing with the two other proposals, allows them to be more flexible as things change over time, as opposed to having to wait an 18-month to two-year period. And it just makes sense that if we're removing it from, if a charter review committee is removing something from the charter in the future, that they'd be able to propose whatever their, if it should go in a bylaw instead, and that's part of their argument, that they'd be able to propose that, that bylaw at the same time. So then Town Meeting sees the entire plan and gets to make an informed decision on the entire issue. So charter amendment one, this is dealing with the schools. It deals with Chapter Four, Section Three. It's just striking language, and it's the bold language in the middle, which says to have, Section D of 4-3-2, to have general charge and superintendence of all school buildings and grounds, and furnish all school buildings with proper fixtures, furniture, and equipment. So charter amendment one, this article would just remove that from the charter. It would still, Massachusetts General Laws still puts responsibility for what's, for town buildings and grounds in the responsibility of the schools unless the town chooses to delegate it elsewhere. So if only, if Town Meeting only supported charter amendment one, for example, article number to be decided and inputted later, state law would still protect and still allow us to implement what we're looking to actually implement here. But that is all that this particular one would seek to do. Then there is the proposed general bylaw. And then after talking with Town Council, we went over Part B with the school committee prior to Town Meeting, and we've continued to involve them in those discussions. But in talking with Town Council, after we heard from schools that they wanted school facilities put in their section, there was some, when there was already buildings, grounds, and equipment, there was just, well, why don't we decide and define what is a school facility that is not a building, not grounds, and not equipment? So as part of that, working with Adam Blaisdell over at Schools, their business manager, we've defined school facilities as, for the purposes of this section, school facilities shall include non-academic school buildings, such as the school administration building, school sports fields, and any press boxes, halftime facilities and/or lighting fixtures, or structures associated with them, wells and wastewater treatment infrastructure located on school properties, parking lots, driveways, and maintenance garages. So that would be what a school facility is. The rest of the definition of what's in schools. Schools also brought up they'd like their vehicles included, so we just included school vehicles. As, as part of the, "School Committee shall have general charge and superintendence of all school buildings, school facilities, school vehicles, and school grounds, and shall furnish all school buildings and school facilities, proper fixtures, furniture, and equipment." And then the town, the provision for the town and its various departments, divisions, just leaves everything else to us. So this is just encoding the status quo as it currently exists in the general bylaw, not changing anything, just allowing us in the future, if it's in the general bylaws, as I said earlier, to change it if and when an agreement is ever reached, which may never happen, but at least we would have the option. It's good to have choices in life. So that brings us to charter amendment two. Again, just allowing a future charter committee, charter review committee, to have the ability to propose new or amended general bylaws. So the way 76-1 is currently written, the charter review committee does their review. They make a report to Town Meeting with recommendations for any proposed changes, and I'm simply proposing that, that report, which is what forms the basis for what Town Meeting actually votes on, can also include, if they choose to, general bylaws that are new or amended from what is currently on the books at that time. They're not required to propose new general bylaws, and Town Meeting would have to approve any, any general bylaws that were proposed, just like they would have to approve any proposed charter amendments. But as we saw from this last Town Meeting, the review of the charter was, at times, somewhat confusing, and there was some various levels of information slash misinformation at certain times by certain folks. And this would hopefully allow for more clarity and for everything to be on the table at once so that people could make an informed decision about any proposal that may come in the future and get out ahead of those issues so they don't reoccur. So that is what I am proposing and seeking support for, to both include in the warrant and recommend for Town Meeting approval. I am available for questions.
Mr. Blitzer?
Kevin, so you've, you've, you've talked to a school committee, and they agree to this?
Yes.
They're supportive of this?
Yes.
So who is the, the enforcing agency of this bylaw? Is it, is it Town Meeting? Is, is it charter review? Is it select board, school committee?
For the, the superintendent's bylaw? So, well, the executive branch enforces bylaws, but this particular bylaw would just delegate authority, so it would delineate who clearly has authority over what.
Yeah, because a lot of times you see in these bylaws, it's, it's clear in there who the agency is that, that enforces, so.
It would be the executive. It would give, it would give the town side, the select board and planning board, supervision over their side as delineated in the bylaw, and the schools, as the executive board of the schools, would have authority over theirs.
Okay.
So it's, it's self-referential because those are the executive branches. That's executive branches under the federal structure enforce the law.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I just have two questions, Kevin.
Sure.
This is voted to move forward tonight. Can we still take it back for another, to reject it? It'll be for Town Meeting, in case there's an issue with workforce or even the school committee for that fact, if something pops up?
So you could, yes, so you could request no motion, no action at the request of the petitioner later, even if it were included. If it's on the warrant, somebody could move it from the floor, but you could request no motion, no action as, as, at the request of the petitioner, even if it's included on the warrant.
Okay. I just had a question there. And if it goes through all the cycles, these revisions, it would still have to go like five years for the charter review committee, the next one, after Town five years for the Charter Review Committee, the next one, after town meeting, it would go to the voters for approval?
So the Charter Review Committee proposals do not go to the voters, Charter Commission recommendations do, which could change the form of government? So there's, under the charter, unamended and consistent with this amendment, at least every five years, there's supposed to be a Charter Review Committee. That would still exist.
Okay.
And that would only go to town meeting for approval. A charter, but that can't, that can only sort of move the deck chairs around within our current structure. A Charter Commission is what could change the form of government if they chose to do so. The last Charter Review Commission arguably didn't choose to do that. So that's up to whoever gets elected and what that commission decides. But a Charter Commission goes to the voters for approval or not. Charter Review goes to town meeting, only. And bylaws also only go to town meeting for approval.
Okay. Which to the board?
Mr. Chairman, unless my colleagues have other questions, I'll make a motion to include these three articles in the warrant and recommend them to town meeting.
Motion by Mr. Golden, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Myself? Yes? Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
And I do have to apologize, because I went right over the forty B, and that wasn't intentional. I just realized that, so I want to apologize. That was, that was me being me, I guess. Spent a long day. So, that being said, welcome, Mr. Hartman.
He was in the bathroom. I thought you did an intention.
No, I didn't.
You'd like literally just stepped out.
I just went over it. Jackie's giving me one of these, so. Yeah.
Good evening. Bill Levitt with the Claremont Companies. Nice to be back in front of the board again. Feels like it's been a while.
Before you get into your presentation, could you just give us a brief, quick, how we got here? What was, because I don't know the whole story, but I got bits and pieces of it. I know what we're doing now, but if you could just explain to the person that's watching how we got to, let's say, the forty B?
Happily. So, thank you again for your time this evening, and I have a few slides that will, I think, perhaps help.
Right, right into that? Okay.
Help with that history. So, just an overview of the parcel and the location within Colony Place. So, we purchased, Claremont purchased parcel of undeveloped property, and the, I'd call it the, I guess, the northwestern corner of Colony Place, next to the Jeep dealership in Soria's Reach. Property had been undeveloped in its entirety since inception of Colony Place. We made the acquisition of the first lot, which is what, as you can see, this was a conceptual building laid out on that property. We then looked at, and so these were the two lots that existed. We purchased initially Lot 2640, and we had plans initially to put one multifamily development on that parcel. We then acquired what's designated here as New Lot 2641, which is also the basin lot. And we had plans to subdivide into lots 5A, 5B, and 5C. Very conceptually, we were going to do a 55 and older on Lot 5A, a future development on Lot 5B, which also would have been multifamily. The original 5A property was about 200 units. 5B was, again, anticipated to be about 150 units. And what we were planning to do was consolidate the massive basin that was on Lot 5, on lots 26 dash one, into Lot 5C, for a number of reasons that ran into some roadblocks, and we have recalibrated our development. And that recalibration includes, this was, again, one of the concepts that we had conceived of for two multifamily developments, and then the consolidation of the basin here. For a number of reasons, we have gone back closer to the original plan, where we're now conceiving of one multifamily property on this, the initial lot. And the detention basin, which I'll go back for a moment, so, oops. The detention basin will remain in its current condition in this area of the parcel. Does that help with just kind of a history or historical component?
A little bit, but that isn't really, what I want to know, Lee, basically, is, what I want the public to understand is, you know what I'm saying?
Yep. So, Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development for the town. So when they went through, we went through a very lengthy process with them. They came for a special permit, 55 and older development through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So after probably a year of discussions, negotiations, mitigations, the ZBA granted that special permit for the 55 and older. They also came into the Planning Board to amend, as was mentioned, the drainage area and make modifications to that. The Planning Board, under subdivision control, approved that change. Both of those were appealed at, originally, by, I think, four different abutters. I think it's down to one now, but that was appealed to the courts. There was also a filing with the state arguing that the drainage area was a wetland, so there were three actual cases that were out there. I should point out, for the town, although there is some involvement in the town on these types of appeals, council usually takes a passive role to just make sure our interests are being, being protected, but most of this is defended by the applicant. So again, they've come in and said, we're unable to, that the path to go through litigation is years. And so because they couldn't do that, they've decided to come in with this forty B. Forty B exempts you from local zoning. Forty B has an expedited process, both at the local level and if an appeal was ever filed at the state level. So they've come in with that. And then the only other thing that was out there, as we went through this whole process through the zoning board to approve the 55 and older, it became, we became aware of a water deficit out there. And so one of the things that you saw on the original slide, as part of the forty B, I mean, the forty B, the 55 and older project, we reached an agreement after lengthy negotiations to deal with the construction of a booster pump that would provide the redundancy we need for the water system. And that same, and this is what's before you tonight, is if you agree to support this, that booster pump is still part of the proposal for this forty B that will allow us to deal with what, so the issue with the booster pump right now is that there's adequate water in this part of town. The problem is redundancy. And so the way it was explained to me is, in the summertime, during the drought, if there was a fire here, we wouldn't have adequate water supply to put that fire out. Now, the odds of that happening, and I guarantee you, as soon as we said it would never happen, it would happen. So again, there is adequate water here. This is just a redundancy that we're looking to build into the system to address the issue short-term. Long-term, the DPW is working on putting a well out in West Plymouth to address the long-term issues. But again, short-term, this is something very important to the town, to have the booster in. And that, without that booster, it does affect our ability to do any future economic development. It won't prohibit it, but it's something else that just adds one more challenge to anything we try to do for economic development. So again, what's before you tonight is a request to support their forty B. It still has to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They can ask for additional things, they could deny it. But this is just whether you support it, and if you support it, there's an MOU that will go with us that memorializes all of those agreements that we talked about, mainly the booster pump, and we've spent a lot of time on that language that's before you tonight. Part of that agreement says that no matter what, they're agreeing to that, they can't come back to the state and say, well, we know we agreed it, now we have our forty B, and we want you to declare that uneconomical. This language that's in that MOU prevents them from doing that.
Okay. What he said. Pardon me. So, as Lee mentioned, we are in front of you this evening seeking an endorsement for the LIP application, letter of support in the MOU, which we've spent a good amount of time with council reviewing and to make sure that, I think we got the MOUs in a condition that is satisfactory to all.
Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Mahoney?
So as we look at the three lots up there, and it looks to me like left to right, it's C, B, and A, correct?
Correct.
With C being the rent retention pond?
That is, that was the proposed plan. Let me move to, this is actually a good plan. This will show you that the development, the proposed 300-unit, five-story wood frame development would be on this parcel here. This is the existing detention basin, and that will remain exactly as it is.
So pretty much B?
Yes. Yes.
And what about A?
There is no, so there, as we, there will be no A, B, and C any longer. It will simply be 26, oops, did I do that? Oh, sorry. It will simply be.
Forty and forty-one?
Forty and forty-one, yes. So the development parcel will be 40, and the drainage parcel.
So the boundary to the left and the boundary to the right are the same?
Yeah, so if you look at this one, so, I'd like to show up.
So if you look, this is the one lot with the development. This is the drainage lot. It actually probably goes over a little more. And so the drainage is here on this property. So they're two different pieces. So they're really just going to be two lots. The original, 55 and older, had three, where this portion of the drainage area would have been moved over, and they would have just done a bigger, deeper drainage area here that would have made this lot available for future development. This proposal just has no changes whatsoever to the drainage lot.
And is that drainage or conservation or both in perpetuity?
No, no. And they could come back at some point to do something else there, but again, it's not conservation, it's drainage. Drainage is actually there to handle the drainage, not just from this site, from the roads, and from some of the, the rest of the development. So there is some possibility that somebody in the future could go back to do something there, but that's not part of this proposal.
Do they own it?
It's owned by the association, which Claremont does control, but there is no intention of developing that parcel.
And outback is the town of Kingston?
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see the chairman of the planning board in the audience. Mr. Bol, would you like to say anything, Steve?
No.
No? Okay. Chris, is there anybody online that'd like to?
No.
No? Anybody in the audience? Okay.
Sorry, I just have, I have a question.
Mr. Blitzer?
So, Mr. Levitt, this, this was going to be a 55-plus rental, and it's not 55-plus now, right?
Correct. This will be forty B, 80% AMI, 25% affordable.
If I could, the state would not allow that, so I think we could have had that discussion, but it's important to note that the desire to make this, or to remove that restriction is through the state, not through either us or the.
No, no, I know, and, but that was the intention in the beginning, and I don't want to get into why this process is taking so long, but, but you're going to manage this property, you're not just going to build this and sell it. You folks, that's what you guys do, that's what your company does.
We have, we've invested a lot in this property. We've owned it for a long time. It's been a significant investment for Claremont over time. We, a lot of our properties, we do own for long periods of time, but not all of them. So I can't say that this is an absolute.
But, okay, I'll, I'm supportive of this project. I was in the beginning, and I don't want to get into all the things that went on here, but anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
So, Lee, we're getting credit towards our affordable housing stock for all 300, correct?
Correct, yes.
And this will give us?
Two years Safe Harbor.
Two years of Safe Harbor.
Yes. So the Safe Harbor comes in, once the ZBA, if the ZBA approves the special permit, that's good for two years, provided that a building permit is pulled within a year. But yes, two years from the date the ZBA would approve.
And between now and then, anyone else who gets into the queue?
Between that and the actual vote of the permit, yes. And as we saw last time, one came in a week before the permit was voted.
Right.
Also, just why I'm here, I should just point out too, this does not, this just starts the project. The next thing is, they apply to the state. State has to give them an eligibility letter, and then they would come back and apply to the ZBA, and the ZBA would have to then go through their review process, too.
Any other questions from the board? So is this a friendly forty B, Lee? Because John asked my other two questions.
Yes, and I will say that, I think, you know, speaking for at least the planning department, even though you might use the term friendly forty B, none of us are looking for forty Bs, and none of us are saying that we'd want to have more forty Bs or more multifamily development in the town. It's the reality of the law that, whether we like it or not, the forty B comes in, and we have very limited control as a town to say no to it. So, but yes, this would be one that we're saying, as a board, we support this one. And again, I think it's primarily because of the mitigation package that's in the MOU.
One more question.
Mr. Blitzer?
Mr. Levitt, one more question, I just want to, because you had no intention, this was not supposed to be a forty B. That was not your intention from the start?
No, the initial property was not a.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Brande C.R., Bill, what is the estimated cost of the booster station that you'd be providing in the agreement?
2.75 million.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions from the board? Nobody has questions? Motion, or the desire of the board?
I'd make a motion that we issue a letter of support for the proposed forty B project.
So you should have a letter, so it'd be a support letter to the state, and then to endorse the MOU that we've negotiated.
So that we issue a letter of support and endorse the MOU contemporaneously.
Development agreement.
A development agreement. Yeah.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I am in support of this, although it is a forty B, and I, as Mr. Hartman said, we're not seeking out forty Bs. The reality of state law is a forty B can come in here whether we want it or not. And Claremont, although I was not on the board yet when this original project was proposed, since I have been on the board, Claremont has tried working with us despite the transition into a forty B because of some, in my opinion, vexatious litigation filed by a persistent litigant that often causes unnecessary and onerous delays in this community for no real benefit. But putting that aside, the, I think Claremont has done their part to try and work with us on this. If we didn't work with them, our incentive for working with them is they can do this whether they, whether we wanted to or not. And they are willing to, unlike the forty B that was before us last week and a prior meeting, that forty B, that Pulte project, was, the mitigation that they were offering was really mitigating the harm that they were going to be causing in a residential neighborhood, whereas this. neighborhood, whereas this is addressing an existing issue that would exist whether or not Claremont was there or not. And it's also, unlike the traffic issues being caused, will be caused by Pulte, and this is a colony place which is already close to the highway, close to Route 80, close to Commerce Way, to get onto Route 3 and Route 44. So I just think it's situated in a different place, and the mitigation that they're offering is for, to address that existing issue and make things safer for West Plymouth and North Plymouth as well. And by having this with those, that agreement, it will give us the opportunity to go into safe harbor, which will prevent other fortyBs from coming without our approval for a two-year period, which is also worth something as well. So while we are often criticized, I think unfairly, for approving developments that we have no real say in, this is one that I think while we, whether we approve it or not, it could come in, but by approving it, the community gets a real benefit from. So that's, I think, a justification for approving it, and I do thank Claremont for working with the town. I know there was, I had some back and forths with Bill about the amount that we would be potentially compensated for if cost estimates on the booster station went over the projections. And we, although the cost estimate, if it goes over two-point-seven-five, that triggers them being able to write us a check instead of building it. That check would be in the amount of three-point-five million dollars, not two-point-seven-five. So that's, that's significant and important. So I just wanted to highlight those things and thank Claremont for working with us and make a case for why I think the board should support this particular project and endorse the MOU and sign the letter of support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Blitzer? No?
I may, no.
Okay. So motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank staff, the planning department, planning board for, and Derek, well, he is staff, Lee. He's our staff. When I say staff, that includes Derek, yeah. All right, the town manager, all right? And to you too, Bill. This isn't what we really wanted, but, you know, it is what it is, and we'll accept it. But it was many meetings with you and your team, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? No one online? Okay. Town managers report, please, Derek?
Okay, just a few quick updates. So as you all know, the town boat ramp project was completed this past spring. The second phase of that project was to make improvements to the boardwalk in front of the Lobster Hut. And we were hoping to get that accomplished this fall, but it was delayed for administrative reasons. So Mr. Gould reported this morning that that boardwalk project will restart, and he's expecting that new boardwalk to be ready and open for our summer tourist season. So that's good news. There will be, on January 30th, the Board of Health is hosting a public forum. The topic of discussion is for the town to consider banning Styrofoam takeout products at our restaurants. So those that are interested in this topic, please look out for the posting by the Board of Health for January 30th. Again, still aiming to move in firefighters at Station 5, or hoping next week they can move in, and then we'll have punch list items that'll take us through the winter and spring, and then for our hopeful ribbon cutting sometime in early April. This coming Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., Town Hall is hosting what is called a Hall a Day stroll, where offices will be decorated for the holiday season. And then with the competition that Mr. Quintal has created, hoping to identify who are the best office, and we'll get a free lunch by Mr. Quintal. So the staff are looking forward to that. Nomination papers, for those that are seeking a elected position locally, nomination papers will be available at the town clerk's office on January 2nd. And the last thing I just want to bring to the board's attention was really good news that was presented last week by the school department. MSBA has approved the school department's letter of intent for eligibility to consider consolidating Hedge School and Cold Spring School. So that's just been approved. They're going to enter the feasibility process over 270 days. They expect that it's going to take upwards of five to seven years for this structure to be built, assuming we'll get approval from not only town meeting, this'll also be a ballot question as well. But we're starting the process sometime in mid-winter for the 270-days feasibility study. So we'll keep the board posted on that. There is an article at the April town meeting for approximately $2 million to pay for the cost of this feasibility study. So again, we'll keep the board posted on the milestones that are met through the MSBA. Depending on any questions, that's really all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Brandici? Mr. Gould?
Thanks for your report, Derek. Do restaurants still use Styrofoam containers?
Apparently, they do.
Is this an endemic problem in the community?
Well, I think to some people, yeah, they do think it's a problem. They want to remove Styrofoam, like they did plastic bags back in 2017. I think we banned plastic bags here in town. So this is a similar philosophy to consider the banning of Styrofoam takeout products.
I can't think of anywhere that I go that uses them.
Cups still, Styrofoam cups?
That's right. Yeah, coffee shops who have Styrofoam, for example. Certain restaurants may use Styrofoam for their takeout products.
Yeah, they use small, the smaller Styrofoam, some places do.
Thank you. Before we get into the select board discussions and new business, do you want to speak on the public comment? Mr. Webber? No? Okay. All right, anybody have anything on the new business? Mr. Canty, and then Mr. Blitzer?
This isn't really, per se, select board business, but I just wanted to point out, this is my first holiday season that I won't have my parents. My parents died this year, for people that don't know. And I'm not the only person in this community that's going through something like that, has lost someone close to them. And I have availed myself of grief therapy, which has helped me process the loss that I've experienced this year. And I just wanted to highlight that for people that are in a similar situation, I think they can sometimes feel very alone, and that no one else is going through what they're going through. And there are other people in this community that are going through what you're going through if you're in that situation. I hope if you are at home or in the audience, and you are going through that or have gone through that, that you either are seeking help or that you will do so. I think that taking appropriate steps to address your mental health is something that not too long ago was a significant stigma in this community, in this society that we live in, and that that's not healthy to anyone. And that I hope people that are struggling are able to find that assistance. I've had, been lucky to have the support of friends and other people in this community that care about me, and I'm sure if you are at home, even if you don't realize it, that there are people in this community that care about you as well. And I wish you and your family and friends a happy holidays, and we will all be in each other's thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else on their new business? Mr. Blitzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Kevin. The Downtown and Waterfront Business Association, they had a pretty good meeting this past week. There was twenty-plus, which is the biggest group they've had. So it's starting to get more active, and there's some new businesses that are involved that are going to revitalize that committee. And one of the things that come out of that committee, and I get a call by one of the business owners who, I'm not sure if he's president, but he's one of the officers of that group. And I had talked before, last year, we talked about purchasing for the sidewalks in Plymouth. Just so you know where I'm coming from, there's a problem sometimes, early mornings, Saturdays or Sunday mornings, and I've seen it more than a few times, of vomit on the sidewalks from probably somebody had a little bit too much on the weekends the night before. And there's also, you know, we've seen, in fact, Derek, you and I have walked and toured the downtown and seen some of the fronts of some of the shops that really need a good scrubbing. And so I had talked about, talking to the business owners about keeping the front of your places clean, your front of the sidewalks, but we need to do, I think we need like a heavier cleaning. And I had asked about getting a scrubber. I guess the DPW had a sweeper, sidewalk sweeper, but that wasn't, that wasn't adequate for what we were looking for. They tested it out, it just didn't work. So I know it's a lot of money for this, it's probably $100, $150,000 for this piece of equipment. So I'm not sure when we'd be able to purchase something like that. But in the meantime, and I see the DPW down there, early mornings, I see them down there blowing the sidewalks off clean, and I see it. So I know they're down there working. And I would just wanted to put it, Mr. Town Manager, if you could maybe talk with our DPW director, and maybe come the spring before the season gets going, maybe get in some power washing, and I don't know how that would work with the unions and stuff, but maybe get some power wash trucks, or I don't know, for your power, and maybe do the downtown area and possibly the waterfront if we can do it. And if it works out, maybe we can do that a couple of times a year, but at least let's try it once and see how that would work out. So I would like to get a plan together, you know, put it together. We've got plenty of time to do it, but I think, I think we need to do that. And then eventually, hopefully, we can put it, you know, and maybe town meeting will be nice and okay at purchase or something like that, because it'd be very useless, useful. We are a tourist town, and this is something we could use all over the place, this sidewalk scrubber. So anyway, that's my new business, and if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we're happy to work with the DPW director. To your point, we did pilot test a piece of equipment that just didn't work for our sidewalks about a year ago. But should go back with the DPW director and see what we can come up with for April.
Anything else on the new, Mr. Mahoney?
So Mr. Canty alluded to we're coming into the holiday season, and I know that we weren't scheduled to meet for three weeks, but I know that I believe we're meeting 20 days from now on Monday, January 6th. And we're going to join with the school committee, and we're going to vote, I believe, to pick a successor to Ms. Badger, who won the state reps seat. So I was just curious if anybody, I don't need names, or how many people have applied for this position so far? And is there a deadline that goes along with that? Has that window closed yet?
We are still accepting applications. I believe we have at least four applications to date for this position.
So with perfect attendance, the school committee will be a body of six, combined with us, five. So we will become a board of 11, and whoever gets the sixth first will get that remainder of that seat.
That is correct.
And we have a similar process coming up in mid to late January with respect to the planning board?
So January 6th, there's a joint meeting over at 11 Lincoln Street with the school committee for Ms. Badger's seat, and then on January 7th, in this room, we'll have a joint meeting with the planning board to, for the board to identify who will take the vacancy seat over at the planning board.
And do we have multiple applicants for that one also?
I have been told we have a high number of applications for the planning board seat.
Okay. All right, well, I'm glad I asked that question, because if you hadn't have said it was at 11 Lincoln Street, I would have showed up here.
That's why I said it.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. We'll see you January 6th. Have wonderful holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, all that good stuff.